Good afternoon. It is Thursday, February 17. This is the regular meeting of the City Council, Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. We'll now have a call to order and a flag salute led by Councilmember Iris Smotrich.
Thank you. Please join me as we salute our glorious flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristi, may we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Councilmember Downs?
Here.
Councilmember Kite?
Here.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Mayor Protem Townsend?
Here.
Mayor Wile?
We will now have non-agenda public comments. Kristi, are you holding any cards?
Yes, first is Tom Atkins.
Hello, everybody, and please excuse my attire. I only found out about the meeting about an hour and a half ago. While I'm speaking, I would like to ask you all, if you have the knowledge to do this, to figure out how much water it takes to cover just one acre with one inch of water, just one. How much is one inch of water in gallons on one acre of land? Okay, I've lived here for seven years, and I really love Rancher Mirage, and I think you guys do a great job. What I was kind of shocked about was seeing the Disney announcement yesterday. When we left off three years ago with an equestrian ranch, I live right around the corner. I saw all the electrical stuff being put in. But it was going to be equestrian estates, maybe with a hotel. The Disney Story Inn is an entirely different prospect that's designed to draw people in even on a daily basis because it's a club. It could be terrific for Rancher Mirage. It could generate a great deal of revenue. But I'm deeply concerned that no one seemed to let us know this was happening. And when I called in, I was shocked to find out that most of you didn't find out till just recently. How we signed a deal with whoever we signed a deal with basically says you can do what you want. And the answer to the question is, in case you haven't figured out, anybody figured out? In order to fill that 24-acre lake with eight feet deep of water, it would require 62,563,000 gallons, millions, of water. And in this environment, and I really appreciate Rancher Mirage, in this environment, that's a terrible thing to put up a flag going, "We're going to let somebody come in and use 5 million or 60 million or this tremendous amount of water sucking it out with the wells that they're probably going to put there from Aquifer." It's going to make us look terrible unless we're properly addressing that. And I also have deep concerns that apparently this last-minute Disney thing was a surprise to everybody, and I'd like to know why we didn't see it coming and have some interaction with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other cards?
Yes, Brad Anderson.
Good afternoon. Brad Anderson, City of Rancher Mirage. I'm usually months behind, so I don't know what that, the Disney, unless it's Area 31. But it is concerning about water usages in the desert. But I just have two items I'd like to hit very quick. Excuse my glasses momentarily. Oh, the minutes, I noticed I was read through the minutes of your last board meeting. And the only issue I have would be, I brought this up before about adjournment. When your city councilor actually adjourns to close session, and then you adjourn from that meeting. But there's no public, you have the city manager come out and adjourn the meeting. But the minutes should reflect that if you're going to do that. And that's, well, in my opinion. And the next one, oh, that's concerning Palm Springs Cemetery District. Your city councilor, or all city councilors, represents that special district too. And I came across some information about, apparently, the cemetery owned some Rancher Mirage property, and they had code violations. And my concerns are that our legal counselor is also their legal counselor, and they're interacting with code compliance on behalf of this special district. And I think it's conflict of interest, but according to your city attorney, it isn't because it's a government entity. So that's just something I'm concerned about. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kristi, any other cards?
No, that was the last speaker card.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, is there anybody online?
If anyone participated remotely would like to make a non-agenda public comment, now's the time to do so. You would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Before we go to our remote audience, anyone here in person that did not fill out a speaker card that wishes to make a non-agenda public comment? Okay, we'll go to our remote audience. And we have no one indicating that they wish to speak. I'll return this to you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Isaiah. That will take care of the non-agenda public comments. We will go to Councilboard comments. And I will start with Councilmember Downs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yesterday morning on national television, DMB Development and Story Living by Disney put Rancher Mirage on a world map with a best-in-class leisure and lifestyle development. So thank you to DMB Development, and good luck and welcome to Story Living by Disney. I've looked at some statistics on the change in Rancher Mirage home prices over the past couple of years and the effect these pandemic years have had on both house prices and home affordability. And I think you'll be interested in some of these numbers. So I looked at numbers in Rancher Mirage first starting in January of 2020, one month before the first COVID-19 case was diagnosed, and then one year later in January '21, and January later in January 2022. So the median sales price in January 2020 was $505,000, increased to about $565,000 in January of 2021. And just last month, it had ballooned up to $861,000. Now, the percentage increase, the one-year increase was 12%. The increase in the second year was a whopping 53% for a two-year increase in property values in the city of 71%. The largest and steepest price increase in the history of the city of Rancher Mirage. Now, I also took a look at some supply and demand statistics. So the time to sell in the city of Rancher Mirage in January 2020 was just 75 days. A year later, it was down to 48 days. And last month, it was 29 days to sell a property. So more buyers are buying properties at a faster rate and at higher prices in this city. And the next supply-demand statistic I looked at was inventory. So in January 2020, there were 445 homes available for sale in this city. The average, by the way, over the last 20 years, the normalized rate is about 450 homes. In January of 2021, that number had dropped to 286. And last month, there were only 129 homes that were available on the market in the city of Rancher Mirage. Half an hour ago, before this meeting started, I looked at that inventory statistic. It's down to 66 homes. And on balance, over the last 12 months, 99 buyers purchased homes in the city of Rancher Mirage. That means, as we all sit here in this chamber today, there are 99 buyers out there in this city or somewhere in the state of California or the world who want to buy 66 homes that are available for sale in this city. I think that tells us a little about supply and demand. And the last statistic I looked at was affordability, approximate affordability. What that means is the average household income in the city of Rancher Mirage can afford to buy a house at what price level. And the number is roughly around $450,000. It's been a little above and a little below that, but that's a good, that's close enough for government work. So about $450,000. So what's the affordability gap? In January 2020, it was $55,000. That number has ballooned up to a little over $410,000 today. So what are some of the takeaways? First, homes at all price levels in the city have participated in the increase, from mobile home parks to gated communities. And we do expect that residential development will take place at a wide variety of price levels over the last couple of years, Section 31 as an example, and other areas, other vacant parcels in the city. Now, at the next City Council meeting on March 3, we'll again take up the topic of the housing element update to the city's general plan. And we'll want to be mindful of these stats and our obligation to comply with the state-of-California requirements regarding affordable housing opportunities in this city. And these numbers show a clear trend in the affordability gap. Two years ago, it was minimal. Real estate agents and lenders can find a way to overcome a 10% or 12% gap. They can't find a way to overcome a $400,000 gap. So we'll need to find a way to deal with this issue, and we'll need to find a way to deal with the state mandate that we update the housing element to our general plan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Steve, that was very enlightening, very revealing. You know, we're all cognizant of what has been occurring in Rancher Mirage in the last year or several years. But to see those numbers as you've presented it is, again, quite startling. And yes, the gap, the affordability gap is significant without a doubt. So thank you for an excellent presentation. Richard?
Thank you, Mayor. What an exciting time we're all going through right now. It's unbelievable.
For sure. Absolutely.
The city of Rancher Mirage has begun its beverage container recycling program, installing smart receptacles in recreation areas and also in public areas throughout the city. For those of you who came in today through the parking lot, you might have noticed new containers in the main parking lot. And these begin functioning today, I would hope. These smart receptacles are solar-powered and will notify and keep, if they are full, they'll notify the Public Works Department. I'm not sure how the containers do this, whether they raise their lid and say, "Hey, we're full. Come empty us." But it's an interesting concept. The on completion of this project, we'll add another 20 receptacles in the heavily-traveled pedestrian areas such as the dog park and the park and the community park. When we look at the actual total cost of the project, it's going to be around $200,000 for the 20 receptacles. This will be solely funded by a grant that the city has received from CalRecycle. So it's a great opportunity for our city to become even more beautiful and being paid for by the Cal program. I'd like to thank all of those in Public Works today who really pushed this forward and made it come together. And we all look forward to keeping our part in Rancher Mirage green and beautiful. And check out the receptacles on your way out today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks very much. Richard? Yes, thank you for Public Works. And Jessica Pulliam has done a great job working on that. So we're appreciative to everyone. Charlie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am pleased to announce that the library has resumed normal operations. The library is open Tuesday, Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Patrons can now browse onsite in the computer lab. Study rooms and children's play area are now open. Table and chairs are once again available, and the full library team is onsite and ready to serve you. Also, the Rancher Mirage Cultural Commission, in coordination with the library and observatory, is calling for all artists. The Ninth Annual Rancher Mirage Artist Show will take place March 26 through the 27. The Pop-Up Gallery will take place on Saturday, March 26, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Rancher Mirage Library and Observatory. Let me further explain. The Pop-Up Gallery will feature the work of up to 20 selected artists who will be onsite to discuss and sell their work for you. There will also be a virtual 3D exhibition that will run online, March 26 through the 27. The Cultural Commission invites artists and craftsperson who live or work in Rancher Mirage to submit artwork to the show. Applications can be submitted through Monday, February 28, by visiting www.ranchermiragelibrary.org/artists. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Charlie. Iris, do you have any comment?
No, nothing for me today. It's really great to be back.
Indeed, it is. It's nice to be back and nice to be maskless as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, and I will make a few comments. Steve mentioned briefly about, and you've read about, the Disney announcement that was made yesterday. And from our standpoint, we're talking about the Disney magic storytelling to frankly, story living in Rancher Mirage. What I think we have to emphasize is the following. This project itself was approved, the specific plan was approved, in 2019. And it has been on our website now for several years, including the environmental impact study. So that I have received several calls that essentially says, "I'm sure you knew about this before." Well, let's clarify that. What we knew about, of course, is the specific plan that we have talked about quite a bit regarding Section 31. We knew that there were 1,700 homes planned along with 400 hotel rooms, a Crystal Lagoon, and essentially, a town center. We learned on Tuesday for the first time that DMV, the developer master plan of the project, had included Disney in the mix. And so when they came into City Hall on Tuesday and met with us, it was the first time. And I must tell you, the reaction was overwhelming with great enthusiasm. There are obviously questions. And from the comments that we've heard, I believe that the first thing you hear when you hear Disney is you associate it with a theme park. And you think of Disney characters running around in outfits that are recognized because of Disneyland. That is not the case here. We are dealing with a major corporation that will be the developer of a very elegant community. It was going to be, it was going to be an excellent development before, but with the Disney touch, it's going to be magnificent. This is not a theme park by any means. Now, there's a number of questions. Of course, many of them answered by the EIR that's on our website, whether it be traffic, congestion, trash, public safety, et cetera. Let me deal with one, and that has to do with the question of water. The Coachella Valley Water District has provided us with assurance that there is more than adequate water for this 24-acre lagoon along with the double-pipe system that we have to recapture all runoff water. That means that all irrigation will be recaptured and put back into the aquifer. So we have addressed the sustainability. Many years ago, this project was master-planned for three golf courses, which would have used an enormous amount of water. And the original plan was this was going to be a 35-acre, 37-acre lake, which has been reduced to 25 acres. So I think that all of that has been taken into consideration. Will there be questions? Of course. The timing is such that the grading is going on essentially now. That'll take eight to 10 months of grading. And you won't literally see any building activity, in my opinion, for a year, year and a half, or somewhere in that magnitude. So it will be an incredible project. It will be very exciting. And I'll leave you with one last quick note. I happen to be an incurable romantic that believes in karma. And I told the Disney folks this story, that many years ago, my uncle was chairman of the board of ABC Television, and Walt Disney came to him and said, Leonard, his name was Leonard Goldenson, "I have an idea to build a theme park in Anaheim. I'd like ABC to finance it for me." And Leonard said, "I'll tell you what I'll do. We will put up the money for Disneyland if you will give us the exclusive distribution of all Disney products on ABC." And that was how that marriage came about. The Disney product became an incredible success on ABC Television, and ABC put up the money to finance Disneyland. So the karma is, it's come full circle. I'm proud to be the mayor during this period of time, that again, another family member is involved in what I think is going to be a magnificent development. So I thank you, and that concludes my comments.
Ted, excuse me, if I can just tack on to something
Certainly.
that you're talking about and that we're all very excited about? Because I received a number of phone calls last night. And I tried to make it very clear that this is not an amusement park. This is not going to be Disneyland. In fact, I even asked the question at the meeting, "Is there going to be a Disney gift shop?" And they said, "No." But if you like the quality of Disneyland and you like the quality of Disney products, you are going to absolutely love the quality and the uniqueness that Disney is going to put together here. We're all going to be proud, and I'm so thrilled. And I thank you so much, Ted, for addressing all these things.
Well, thank you. Yes, I think we all will be very proud. And like anything else, there's always going to be a certain degree of skepticism on anything that's new. And I understand that. But in time, this will be a very shining, a very shining star. I will now ask the city manager if he has any comments today.
Yeah, I'll be brief since you pretty much covered it, Mayor. But I was going to address the development process and kind of what people can expect next now that we've had this big announcement. So the council's job is to basically entitle a project and determine what can be built on a specific site. So with Section 31, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the council did that in 2019. So after that, you know, it's the property owner and the developer that then get entitlements to build so many residential units, so much commercial space, hotel space on this site. And then they have to go out and they have to find the consultants and the builders that are actually going to do it. And so that's not a process that the city interferes with. That property owner and the developer have the right to go out and pick the people that they think is best. And the city does not interfere with that process on who they select. And so in a normal build, this wouldn't be news. You know, the fact that it's Disney and this has now hit the world stage is why this is news. But it's very normal for us, to us, the city, to not know who the consultants are until they're under contract. And that's exactly what happened here. It just happens to be Disney, which is not normal. But that's, so what's going to happen next is the specific project. So they're developing a community residential units. Their design teams are going to do what they are paid to do. They're going to design the project. And that has to come back through the entitlement process. And so this is really the beginning of the public process. So, you know, later down the road, when they have the renderings and all the details of this community, and it covers everything, from lock coverages to setbacks to everything that's in our city code, including the architectural elements of the project and what the project is going to look like, that then again, for each one of these projects, is going to flow through the public process here at the city. So people in the public will have the opportunity to review what this project is going to look like. They'll have the opportunity to come to Architectural Review Board meetings, Planning Commission meetings, City Council meetings. All the public hearing notices will be published. So this is really just the beginning of this process. So, you know, everyone will have the opportunity as that comes back through the normal process. So I just wanted to clarify, it's very normal. And the city does not interfere with a property owner's right to go select the builders and the consultants that they feel is right for their project. That is very normal. So what happens next is, you know, it's not the end of the story. This project, with the way it looks and all the required elements, will still flow through the public process. So the public will have plenty of opportunities to see and comment on what is happening with this development as it progresses through the process.
Thanks. And I'll merely tag on to that, that with the financial clout of Disney, they will have the ability to pick and choose the most qualified, the most qualified builders to come in to develop the various segments of this community. So it'll be the very best available. In addition, we at the city are going to be, I assure you, deluged with requests. I'm already starting to receive them. What is the start date? Can we put our name in now as far as a house is concerned? You can put your name in and put your, you can put your hand down, Kristi. And basically, the way that's going to work is that Disney has their own website. And so anything that comes into the city, we are going to be referring directly to the Disney website. And that's up and running now. You can go in and take a look at it. That will keep you up to date on where things are and how you can participate in the future. And I assure you, there's going to be a lot of people that are going to say, "I want to get in line right now." So that being said, we will now go to the minutes of February 3, the regular meeting of 2022. If there are no additions or deletions, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We will now have the consent calendar handled by our, Isaiah Hagerman, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have five items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to adopt Joint Resolution Number 2022, next in order, making findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, as amended by Assembly Bill 361, and authorizing continued remote teleconference meetings of the City Council and affiliated agencies and all other city-affiliated Brown Act bodies in accordance with AB 361 during the current state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Item number two is to adopt Resolution Number 2022, next in order, adopting the investment policies pertaining to the investment of city funds. Item number three is to appoint City Council members to serve on various city and outside agency boards, committees, commissions. Item number four is to award a special assistance fund to Desert Cancer Foundation in the amount of $2,500. Item number five are demands. And before we go to the council for questions or comments, if any member of the public wishes to speak on one of these five items, now is the time to do so. You would hit the, if you're participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Kristi, do we have any speaker cards for the consent calendar?
Yes, just one. Brad Anderson?
Hello again. Brad Anderson, City of Rancher Mirage. I wanted to speak today on the consent item number one. And that's concerning the Resolution Number known about initiating or re-initiating AB 361 of California. Number known about initiating or re-initiating AB 361, a California new law, to allow remote meetings. And I'm all for the public participating in a remote aspect of the meeting. But again, I'm against the city council or board members or commissioners not being approachable by the public. And I just want to remind this council and anybody that's listening, the only thing that was taken away or the amendment of this AB 361 are the safeguards of the California Brown Act, which would allow the public to monitor the activities of the elected official, in this case, board members. I can't really explain it in detail, I run out of time. But I'm against this, I'm opposed to this, again. And you've shown that it's not necessary by having this meeting today and other meetings that you've had, that I've attended, that I've been locked into from the city. And I'm afraid, it's been proven already, that this new law has been abused by elected officials and non-elected officials by, now, this is a social distancing aspect of this law, meaning that people should social distance, and that's why people don't want to attend these meetings, for safety reasons. And that's fine, but when you have a council member calling from an airport or going on family business, that's abusing this aspect of this law. So, and we are in a state of emergency yet. Sacramento's not going to change that, and the governor's not going to change that. But it's been proven that the city gets more done when the public can't participate freely. And I'm kind of concerned too, because of these remote access. There was talk about this development that's going in and how you met on Tuesday and questions were asked. So was this a public meeting? Were all the council attendants? I don't know. But that's the aspect of having a firm meeting. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else that didn't fill out a speaker card that wishes to speak on the consent calendar? We'll go to our remote audience. And we have no one wishing to speak. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn this over to you and the council.
Okay, thank you, Isaiah. Is there anybody on the council that would like to make comments regarding the consent calendar? I see none. I will ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move that we accept and approve the consent calendar.
Second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item, and the only item on our action calendar today, is that the city council approve a request by the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert for a matching grant of $150,000. And that will be introduced by Gabe Coddin, our Director of Marketing. Gabe, if you would, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager. So before you, before you today, you have the outlines of a request from the Children's Discovery Museum for a matching grant of $150,000. It's important to note that the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert, located in Rancho Mirage but serves the whole valley, has been serving the valley for over 30 years. The Cove Community Cities, which include Rancho Mirage, Palm Desert, and Indian Wells, collaborated back in the building that they're currently in with redevelopment funds and had a collaboration to help kickstart the current building that they're in. In March of 2020, the museum closed its doors because of COVID and had been adversely impacted ever since. It's important to note, 85% of the museum's revenue is active. So it means it's coming from visitor fees, memberships, programming. So not being allowed to do that was a devastating blow to operations. The museum has applied for numerous grants. To date, they've received approximately eight to 10 grants for a total of $500,000. However, it's important to know that $400,000 of that $500,000 was the shuttered venue grant, which has a lot of various allocations and restrictions on how that money can be used. So at this time, we have our, we have the museum CEO here, along with members of the board and both co-chairs here. So I'd like to invite up Cindy Burrisson, CEO of the Children's Discovery Museum, to present more on their reimagination reopening campaign. Cindy?
Thank you very much, Gabe. Mayor Wyer, city council members Downs, Kite, Smotrich, and Townsend, city staff and visitors today. I'm Cindy Burrisson, the CEO of the Children's Discovery Museum and a mom, most importantly, of two boys. The City of Rancho Mirage has always been a fantastic partner of the museum, and for that, we're very, very thankful. So on behalf of the staff and our board, thank you for that. Today, we're asking the city to consider assisting us in our fundraising efforts of our reimagination project by implementing a matching grant campaign. Your investment will help us reopen with over 40 new exhibits and programming for our valley's kids. You're going to be impacting our future. The museum is needed now more than ever because the biggest victims of the pandemic were our kids. It's affected kids in a huge way. In the United States, 140,000 kids lost their caregivers, whether they were parents or grandparents to COVID. And now globally, one in four kids is, are depressed, and one in five are reporting anxiety. Our kids have experienced, I know firsthand, everything from mask-wearing, disinfecting, distance learning, which if you haven't experienced that, it's something to be, not to be admired, and social isolation from their friends most of all. They've missed out on birthday parties, school field trips, and family vacations. They're missing the normalcy and simplicity of childhood plain and simple. But the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert is a place that allows children to experience laughter and fun and educational opportunities and not worry about what's happening outside of our four walls. It gives them a place to explore and learn and interact with each other and their families. It's a place where they can feel safe and cared for, and quite simply, it allows them to just be kids. So I invite you to watch this video to see how the museum is an economic driver, a safe haven for families, and an investment in our future leaders. Welcome to the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert. A place where kids and their families experience the joy of learning about themselves and the world around them. I'm Cindy Burrisson, and I'm the CEO of the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert. So we opened three decades ago. There's President Ford. And we have seen hundreds of thousands of families since then. COVID impacted us in a big way. Obviously, a hands-on museum doesn't fare well during a pandemic. And so we ended up having to close in March 2020. We decided that instead of coming out of the pandemic in a bad way, we decided to reimagine the museum. We're going to have over 40 new exhibits to include a brand-new toddler town. We're going to have a section called Move that will have a net-climbing structure and a rock-climbing wall and a noodle forest. It does come with a cost. We have to raise $3 million for this first phase. And then we have subsequent phases. So we will be fundraising from here on out to make the best of this museum.
This is the map of the nine cities of the Coachella Valley and the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert, right here in the middle in Rancho Mirage. I'm Davis Meyer, a passionate board member for the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert, as well as a mom who loves taking my son there. I am also Director of Partnership for Visit Greater Palm Springs, our valley's regional tourism agency. In 2019, the Children's Discovery Museum saw nearly 87,000 total visitors. Two out of every three of those visitors came from out of the area, and locally, we saw thousands of visitors from all nine cities. As we analyzed travel trends from 2021, we saw that 24% of our visitors traveled with children. Looking forward into 2022, one in every four visitors to Greater Palm Springs plans to travel with children under 12 years old. Having the chance to reopen the Children's Discovery Museum, reimagined and renewed, is critical for not just our local community and our local families, but for visitors to our valley as well.
The City of Rancho Mirage has always been a phenomenal partner of the museum, helping us out throughout the years. And we are actually going to be presenting an opportunity for a grant-matching program of $150,000, that we are hopeful the city will realize the value and the legacy of the museum and be our partner in that endeavor.
What's on your pizza?
A sausage.
This is a, an effort for the community by the community. So if you'd like to help out the museum, you can go directly to our website, which is cdmod.org. And there's a Donate Now button right when you get to the homepage. And our hope is that we can open in December of this year, so we can be here for holiday break. But we really need our community's support. So thank you for your attention to that. My heart and soul is in this museum, but this has been the heart and soul of our valley for over three decades. So thank you very much.
Well, thanks for the presentation. It's exciting. And it's important for not only our city, but the entire valley. Probably everybody here can relate to the children's museum in some way, whether it's their own children or the grandchildren, in my case, grandchildren. But wonderful, wonderful memories. And we have so much to make up for from a time standpoint now. As you say, the kids have, you know, gone through a challenging, difficult time. And they need our help. And so hopefully, we'll be able to assist in some small way. So we thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak while you're here today?
I believe they all maintain their silence. But thank you very much.
There's several people sitting down there that are amazed that they're silent, but that's okay. In any case, thank you so much. Excuse me. Are any of the colleagues here desirous to speak?
Was that you, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Richard.
Thank you. And today's really an exciting day for all of us, not only because of what we're doing with Disney and that potential development, but also the exciting things that are going on in the Children's Discovery Museum. It's really great to have Cindy here today because Cindy has brought this museum from basically zero two years ago to an exciting proposed opening in December of this year. So we're, we've certainly put a lot into this. Cindy has worked with her board and volunteer staff, and this has been a great opportunity. Last night, we were putting together a meeting for, actually, it was a board of directors meeting, and had an opportunity to walk through the facility. And it's just unbelievable, the changes that have been made over the two-year period of time, really changed the whole focus of the children's museum from what it was 20 years ago to what it is now. Our children are being taught differently. The recreation is different, and it's really great that we've been able to come in and make that change. And the funding that we're asking for today, I say "we're" because I'm on the board of the museum, is money that will help provide all the necessary items to open in December. And then we'll have to continue to move on with more and more contributions. You know, it was 30 years ago that the children's museum first broke ground. And for a good period of time, it was really an exciting facility. Over the last couple of years, we've run into financial problems, but we're coming out of it really very strong. And we're hoping that the other cities in the area, Rancho, in addition to Rancho Mirage, Indian Wells, and Palm Desert, will look at what we're doing here in Rancho Mirage and feel that it's to their benefit to have a strong and vital children's museum that they can work with also. So we're hoping that today's kickoff and the fundraising will be more of the future. And, you know, two years ago, you wouldn't find anybody who has put up two cents for the museum. And now, two years later, we're ready to go with a funding program and really very strongly moving forward for the first next six months towards this matching fund. So I think it's really an item the city can be proud of. It'll draw residents, and it'll draw businesspeople and travelers. The Children's Discovery Museum, a few years ago, was a place that families brought their children and was a great success at that time. We hope to reenact a lot of the previous activities and really move forward with this building. If you haven't been in the Children's Discovery Museum, you might plan to stop by, see what's going on, talk to Cindy, and she can really show you how excited we are about the future of the museum. And in addition to that, the future of Rancho Mirage. So, Mr. Mayor, I think the City of Rancho Mirage has got an excellent opportunity here to do some major funding, but not by themselves. It is a matching grant, so they will have to go out and still get a major amount of money to have that $3 million in December.
Well, thank you, Richard. Thanks for the explanation. Thanks for the compassionate enthusiasm that you have. Obviously, you're dedicated to the museum. You've been involved a long time, and you expressed it extremely well. Before I ask my other colleagues for any comment, I neglected to ask if there are any comments that the public is holding regarding this item.
I have one speaker card from Brad Anderson.
Thank you again, Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I'm going to be a Debbie Downer here. I'm opposed to this, and I've submitted a written statement. Hopefully, people can look at that. Kind of details my take on the whole situation and how it trickles down. But I'm at a disadvantage because I didn't know the Area 31 situation, and apparently the council didn't know until last week or this week. And that's an aspect to the success of this desert museum or the desert children's museum. And I guess I was, I didn't know that Mr. Kite was a present, I was going to say dictator, director of that organization. I knew he was a past one. But, so that, that kind of complex or makes this whole situation unique. And I know Mr. Wyer supports other organizations related to that, one that's partnered with that. So not that that's the only aspect that I'm against is. I think it's, I, my letter kind of submits ideas, meaning location, location, meaning that I think the organization would be better in another suitable city like Indio. Anything with younger generations. But again, if we have a destination resort now, or destination amusement park, or whatever it is, coming in, it may succeed there. But I guess my letter would detail most everything that I've said in detail. And, but I just want to remind everybody that doesn't know that this, this board has two cell towers on site, so they have the revenue driver from those. And the city does investments for them with their monies. So, you know, if you're going to give money away, especially in this large quantity, $150,000 this one time, there's going to be other monies too. Other organizations, other businesses, private nonprofits should be, should be allocated or should be considered for those grants or matching funds too. Thank you. I wanted to speak on closed session when that comes to air. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Any other cards?
No.
If anyone on the remote audience would like to speak on this item, you would use the raise hand button or star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in person that didn't fill out a speaker card that wishes to speak on this item? We will check our remote audience. And no one has indicated that they wish to speak. We will check our remote audience, and no one has indicated that they wish to speak. We'll close the public comment period, and I'll turn this back over to the council.
Thank you, Isaiah. Anyone else on the council?
I do like to say a few words. First of all, this is just not Rancho Mirage that was built here, but it's to serve the entire Coachella Valley. Let's not forget that. This is the nine cities are all in the game here and their kids. And I think that one of the presentations that I was with you guys, I think one of the numbers were like 87,000 kids from, I'll say it again, from not just Rancho Mirage, but everybody is involved with this, not only Palm Desert or Indian Wells, but Cathedral City, and again and again and again. And I know that you are taking your roadshow on the road to visit all these other cities, and I wish you great success. And I think everything that Richard said really captured the whole flavor. Thanks to all of you, the courage to come into something that you inherited and turn it around like this, even to this point, all of you, is amazing. A lot of work, and I know that. So, bless you all. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yes.
Iris? Yes. Well, first of all, I want to congratulate you all. You have done an incredible job over the last several years, but especially the last two years. You have met challenges that are unheard of, and you have come through with shiny colors. You've done amazing work. When you think about the 85,000 people that you served prior to the pandemic with education and interaction and everything that goes with it, with a warm feeling, and as Charlie said, with the nine cities, it is beyond because all the visitors that come here and can't wait, especially if the children have been here before and want to come back to see the progress that is now being made. It is quite remarkable, the job you have done. And what is even more remarkable is the fact that this is the only facility of this type in almost 50 miles. So, there is nothing else that caters to children, to families and their needs and their education and their fun and their warmth that they feel. You have just done remarkable work, and as a parent and a grandparent, I couldn't be more proud to have you in our city and have you cater to all the needs from all over the world when people come here. Thank you again, and congratulations.
Thank you, Iris. Steve?
So, I have to admit, it's been some years since I've been in the Children's Discovery Museum. My grandson's 27 years old. But some years ago, he spent a good deal of time there, and I thank you for that time then, and I thank you for all the work that you do now. And as you might guess, I plan to vote yes today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. And again, thank you all for being here today. Thanks for your dedication, your enthusiasm, something that, you know, we talk about the children. That's our future, and that's where the future is. We want them to be healthy of both body and mind, and that's what the children's museum contributes. So, I thank you again for all that you do. If there are no additional comments at this time, I'll ask for a motion.
Okay. I'd be happy to make a motion on an item that is so important to our city. But I request that the City Council approve a request by the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert for a matching grant of $150,000.
Yeah, and I will second that.
Now, there is a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
And congratulations to you. We look forward, indeed, we look forward to writing that check, matching the contributions that are made. And so, that'll be our pleasure to be able to do that, and obviously, we wish you the best. So, thank you. Thank you for being here. That concludes our action calendar, and we're going to be recessing in a closed session momentarily after our city attorney gives us the agenda for the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council is now going to recess in a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 regarding existing litigation known as vacation rental owners and neighbors of Rancho Mirage, Rancho Mirage Vacation Rentals LLC at all versus the City of Rancho Mirage.
Before we recess in the closed session, Mr. Mayor, we did have a member of the public indicate that they wish to make a comment on this item. Brad, if you want to come on up?
Thank you again, Brad Anderson. I just wanted to mention, I said this before at other meetings on the closed session items, especially with the details of the short-term renters, I believe, that's what's going to be discussed today, or the lawsuits or legal actions or litigation, I guess, would be the right word. But I would highly recommend that the city retain other legal counsel to move this along because it's been sitting around and it's just, it's costing taxpayers, it's costing everybody a lot of money to do nothing. And I will wait for your adjournment today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. With that, we will now recess to closed session.
It's 3:45, and the City Council took no reportable action in closed session. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.